Attention, before we open up the planning board meeting tonight, this, we've allowed the applicant to use this room and to use everybody here because we figured this would be the best place to get everybody out here. The applicant for this amendment to the application has to do a DEP public hearing to get feedback from everybody in the community. He's going to give a brief presentation and this is going to satisfy those requirements for the renewal of his DEP permit or, you know, denial, whatever. So, it has nothing to do with the planning board. We don't do those. The applicant has to. So, we're just going to turn it over to the developer right now.
And we're going to have our own public hearing.
Yeah, we're going to, well-
July 18th.
Yes, not tonight. So, there's going to be no action tonight on this, no action approval or denial of this application tonight, just so you know.
Thank you. My name is Joel O'Leary. I'm an AP engineer with Amity Engineering in Portsmouth, Hampshire. Represent the applicant Black Dog Realty LLC. Will be tonight representing Black Dogs, Mark Phillips.
Michael Phillips.
We'll both be able to answer questions.
She's got my two fists right up there.
This is an informational meeting for purposes of MDP permit renewal. Project was originally approved in 2009 as a 90 lot subdivision for affordable elderly housing. Due to economic conditions at the time, the owner, Mark Phillips, chose not to build. Several permits lapsed and were renewed since 2009. This public information addresses the reapplication for a site location permit under MDP law rules. Other permits include Natural Resource Protection Act permit. That is due to expire in September 2019 for which we have a request for a minor revision and extension for that permit. Stream crossing permit by rule, a US Army Corps of Engineers permit, general programmatic permit to place fill in 24,611 square feet or .56 acres of waterway and/or wetland in conjunction with the project. Local permitting including amended subdivision, approval for which a public hearing is scheduled for July 18th. 2019 updated approval letters for capacity to serve for sewer and water are in hand. For project overview, there are two access drives off BlackBerry Hill Road designated by letter, Road A, Road B, C, D, E, F through G as you get up into the site. Access Road A, which is right here, is a one-way in. Access Road B is two ways in and out. There are a number of site amenities for the residents, clubhouse, volleyball court, and other grounds in this area. Speed limits are posted as 10 miles per hour throughout the site. This area here is connected by a boulevard with a raised median. There are sidewalks that extend along Road B up to this point of the site. We've, through our reviews with the state, since the 2009 approval, there had previously been a 250-foot buffer, protective buffer along Worcester Brook. That was extended for this reapplication to 300 feet. That reduced the number of lots from 90, which you see here on the color plan, in this vicinity here. You can see the difference. It's a reduction of 13 lots from the 90 that were approved 10 years ago to 77 that we are applying for now. There is a sewer easement and a pump station here that will service, serve the site. Stormwater treatment is by filtration, detention, forested buffers, and porous pavement, porous pavement along the boulevard, detention basins, filtration basins here and here, forested buffer in this area here of the site. The project for construction will be phased generally starting at BlackBerry Hill, working in, building the road as the phases progress, building lots as those phases are completed. Another change that resulted from the reviews at the state level included a change to the culvert, the stream crossing here. Previously, we had a twin three-foot by eight-foot box culvert. It needed to be wildlife-friendly, friendly, have a natural bottom. We've revised that. It'll be a culvert, an arch culvert with a natural bottom, having a 19-foot span. And that's my presentation. I'll open it up to questions, but I'd like to pass around an attendance sheet for anybody who is here, just speak to the project if I could. Mark, would you like to say something?
Just a couple of things.
Yeah.
My name's Mark Phillips. I'm the applicant developer. Have this property since 2007, I think. What you should know is that I'm trying to build this the same way that Russell Wester built Cole Brown Estates in Elliot. And these photos are taken in Elliot just a week ago to show you why he's built down there. Typically, they would be what we call double wide or gable roofed houses, sitting on a, not on a pad with skirting four feet off the ground, but a sunken four-foot concrete basement so that the homes hug the ground and each one is attached with a stick-built garage. That way, driving around, the curb appeal is great because it looks like conventional stick-built housing. In his case, he's sold these homes for starting at $200,000 and they're on rented land. This would be all, all the land would be maintained by the developer. We'd rent the lots. People would own their own homes. They would not be able to rent their homes. Hence, everybody's a homeowner of their estate in the community. And all utilities would be public, be individually metered for water and sewer. The roads would be maintained by the developer, not the town of Trent. And it's an over 55 park, which means at least one member of every home has to be at least 55 years of age. And how that works out, I asked a friend of mine, Don Toy, who owns Cuchico River Estates in Rochester. That's 128 units of over 55 manufactured housing. It took him 25 years to build it. And I said, "Don, have you ever had a situation where a family is living in there?" And he said, "Only once." He had an older couple move in and tragically their son and daughter-in-law were killed in a car accident. So, they took in the kids to their house and within two months, the kids couldn't stand it. There was no other kids to play with. There's no playgrounds, there's no facilities for kids. So, the grandparents voluntarily moved to another location just for the good of their grandchildren. So, that's basically his history. So, that would be, basically, you may have either one or two kids in school, but nothing like conventional subdivision. That's basically, if I understand, unless someone has some questions. One second.
How many bedrooms are?
I would just, I know I'm not running the meeting, but it's on, I'm at home, so if you could just go to the podium.
Okay.
Think you just step up to the podium. Yeah, if you have viewers at home.
How many units, or, sorry, how many bedrooms are in each unit?
They vary. They're either, you know, two or three bedrooms. Typically, one is a clinical study or workout room for, you know, one of the couples, but it's not designed for, you know, families, basically.
So, it's an over 55 community and you are now allowed to rent the properties. Who is going to regulate that?
Well, there's some very strict rules and regulations everybody has to sign when they move in. And it goes, it's up to the, you know, the owner to administer those and enforce them. And I've been in the mobile home park business for 20 years and people don't get away with us many of those.
So, it's self-police, basically, you know? It's up, it would be up to a neighbor to come in and say that.
Well, we don't pull bed checks, but I mean, we know who's in the house.
Yeah.
And the only time I've allowed, you know, discrepancy on that would be if, you know, an older person died and the daughter wanted to move into the house, that's family, that's acceptable until she, you know, finds someplace else, but it's, they're not renting the houses to other people.
Okay, because I think, I mean, they're trailer, I know you said they're on foundations, so in their trailers, essentially, so I think, speak for most of the people here that might be against it, that, you know, it's a trailer park, essentially, so that's kind of the big-
Well, let me correct you on that, sir. You know, back in the 50s and 60s, you had a trailer that was eight feet wide and you could totally hide your station wagon if you're down the road. All that ended on June 30th, 1976. That's when a mobile home became a manufactured home under HUD code law, federal law. So, no bank will fight against anything before that time. So, everything out there now is HUD code, which is a national building code. It's got nothing to do with the local building code. And so, it has to meet those requirements and it's, these newer homes in good locations actually appreciate the value, not depreciate, which is for the first time in history, basically.
Okay, so there was a mention of volleyball court and some other amenities up in the front there. My parents are in their 60s and I don't see them playing volleyball anytime soon. So, I mean, I don't mean to be rude, I'm just kind of like, like I mentioned a moment ago, it's more of a, just a concern of-
Well, it's a manufactured home park, whatever you want to call it. It's redesigned to like a barbecue area, it's right next to the mailboxes. That's going to be a gathering place for older folks who come to get their mail every day. So, it's a, it's a more of a, you know, conversational gathering place than maybe a fire pit, that type of thing, something more appropriate to the, you know, to the age.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. I got a question. So, I got a couple of questions for you. I actually drove through Cole Brown Estates yesterday and it looks great. It's only two years old. I drove through a couple of other manufactured home parks in Elliot that are a lot older. Roads are patched. I mean, they're tired. What, you know, how is this going to be maintained? 15 years down the road, 20 years down the road?
Well, when you do something brand new and you can control what happens over there, you know, then you've got a situation that the property you're referring to, I own, it's Marshall Estates.
Okay.
And I bought that 12 years ago when it was in terrible shape. I put a quarter million dollars into the water system last year alone. We had terrible water over there, but I was going to resolve that. So, I'm working on the worst things first, if you will. But we moved a lot of homes out of there that are older, put in newer homes. So, it's a, it's a process, it's not an event. But in this case, everything will be a brand-new home. It'll be, you know, you don't have to repay the loan for 20 years, so it's going to be in very good shape, I believe.
Okay. And you said, are you intending to have this 100%, 55 and up? I mean, I know the requirement for a 55 and up community is only 80%.
That's correct. So, HUD allows you to have discrepancies on that if it's people that are disabled and need, you know, assistance. They can be younger. And there's also an allowance for if you had, like, maintenance staff that was-
Well, but the law just says 80%. I mean, it doesn't break down that remaining 20 when I look at it.
That's the idea behind it, so.
So-
The goal is to have-
100%.
Right.
Are you going to do it like Cole Brown Estates where it would be residents of Burwick first, then former residents of Burwick, then relatives of residents of Burwick before it goes to the general public?
I don't know that I can do that legally. That's, and I don't-
I mean, that's, I'm just curious because that's the way they have it on their website.
Well, I don't think he has a legal right to do that, but I'm not here to judge.
Okay.
Just, obviously, that would be great, but I don't know that that's enforceable.
Okay.
I've never had a question on that before.
Okay. Like I said, it's right on there, if you look on their website, under the admissions policies. So, all right. No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. Well, my name is Peg Wheeler, Burwick resident, and when the, when the project first came to the town, I may have been on the Board of Selectmen at that point, but some of the questions we had then, and I still have, all of these questions and answers sort of make sense, except for a couple of things. I'm nearly 60 and I'm a parent of a child who is in high school. So, there are people in this town who believe that 55 and older means that everybody in the house has to be 55 and older, so I'm hoping that we can clarify that because I do have concerns about the impact on the school. You're talking about projects like this that don't have facilities for kids, but this is being built right across the street from a facility for kids, really nice little playground. And the traffic right there, and this is probably more addressed at the town than it is at you, is a nightmare. The traffic on that road is a nightmare. On days where there are events at that school, it is virtually impossible to get in and out of the road right there. And I'm concerned that with this additional traffic congestion right at the end of the road, if there's an emergency on that road, vehicles are going to have a tough time getting in and out. So, I know that the first time this was approved, that sort of fell on deaf ears and there were no adjustments made to the road and/or to the speed limit, which also concerns me. The speed limit on BlackBerry Hill Road is higher than it is on similar roads in Burwick. Pioneer Road, Cemetery Road are 35. This road is 40. I walk on that road every day and I take my life in my hands. I nearly shoved my daughter in the baby carriage into the ditch a couple of times this week because, because of that. So, I'm hoping the town hears that. I think it's really concerning. But the additional concern I have is that you may have some very good intentions about this project, but it is quite possible that you may decide to sell this project to somebody else.
Well, whoever owns it has to abide by the rules as prescribed by the planning board. It'll be demanded right on the, you know, the side mile iron that they sign.
The 55 and older, 80%.
Yeah. And the conditions of approval, I'm sure, will be a longer list of-
Right. But I do agree with the first gentleman who spoke, is who's policing that is important. If somebody purchases that project, who's going to be responsible for doing that? If it's somebody who's, we have some landlords in town who don't even live necessarily in the country all year round. So, I think, I think it can be challenging to enforce those rules. And given where the project is located, I think it's just inviting families, or people my age with, with children still or grandchildren. Thank you.
I'd like to address her question about traffic. And the project as a whole was fully vetted by the towns.
I know.
Years of various-
Yeah, I remember.
... grounds. One study or review by Norway Plains Associates for the Traffic Impact Analysis did find, you know, no significant impacts. It went into level of service at intersections, the trip generations that were used were very conservative.
Yeah, I remember, but it, that go there when school's getting out, or in the morning at drop-off.
I would also point out that the peaks are different for elderly developments than are for normal residential developments.
We heard that, but I probably qualify as elderly, as do a lot of my peers, and we have trouble getting in and out of that road at the times I go to work. I do think the trends have changed. I'm not retiring anytime soon, so I need to get to work at the same time that people need to drop off, pick up their kids, and I have kids and grandkids that are still going to school. So, I think calling a retirement community is awesome. I wish I was retiring at 55. I'd be lucky if I retired by the time I'm 90 and I have a lot of peers who are probably in that same boat. So, that, that's wonderful. I just, I remember when that was done, people felt like that was not, there was not a lot of integrity to that study because there are, I live there, I can tell you that that just makes no sense to me. The congestion is already something that needs to be addressed. The road is dangerous already, so I can't, you're going to double the number of residences on that end of BlackBerry Hill Road. My husband and I were trying to calculate last night how many we have at that section of BlackBerry Hill Road, and that's literally going to double the number of residents to suggest that that's not going to create some traffic congestion on top of already having a school down there is just, that just doesn't make any sense. But it's my, my two cents. It's the same two cents I had the first time it came around, so fewer units, so.
Thank you. If I, if I may, we're going to have a public hearing on this application next month, but this is just about the DEP. So, I know there's a ton of questions and we're also going to talk more with the applicant during the planning board meeting, but this is just about the, their permit with the Department of Environmental Protection. So, I know this is your first opportunity to come out and ask these questions, but-
And I would entertain questions that pertain to environmental impacts, wetlands, wildlife.
Not trying to shut anybody down, I'm just trying to stay focused, so.
I'll add a few wildlife comments if nobody else wants to.
That's what we're looking, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, well, but I, well, I'll tell you what I did to prepare for this because it's what I do. I run a program in veterinary technology and animal science, so it is my life. And I do walk on that road every day. The amount of wildlife that's getting squished into BlackBerry Hill Road, I have essentially a population of three or four turkeys that live in my front yard because they don't have anywhere else to go. We've got bears running up and down the street. We've got coyotes running up and down the street. We've got two populations of threatened and endangered turtles, one of which I know, you already know because it was an issue last time. We're dealing with spotted turtles on that road now, which are on the, on the watch list as well. But I mean, I, I see that you're addressing some of that, so I don't know, I don't know that I can add to that. I did contact some state folks about these issues who feel like because of where you're at already, this, there's nothing more to complain about than we've already done and they don't really feel like there's, there's much we can do. I do hope that there's some integrity with addressing the wildlife protection there. The culvert that you managed is positive, more of a buffer for the brook is a positive. You're going to be getting into a really active population of beavers up there too, who may mess with your plans a little bit, but they're there and it, you can't take that kind of a space and not impact wildlife, so we'll see the impacts, I'm sure.
Well, I can tell you that Mark is going above and beyond in the sense that he, there are a number of recommendations that came out of our reviews with inland fisheries and wildlife, US Army Corps, because the Army Corps permit is still valid.
Yeah.
They can't impose higher restrictions on that side.
That's what I was told when I contacted people.
However, it did come up at our meetings and they did ask for more.
Yeah.
And Mark is-
Right. I've already, so, I'm only saying this to be on record as having said it. I did make the phone calls. I know that that's the case, so I know that really there's not an awful lot we're going to do. I just hope that it is, is addressed because-
I appreciate your concern. I just want to make one casual comment that basically everything that's in the light color here, you know, is the, is the development area, and that really coincides with the gravel pit.
Right.
Years ago, Steve Brown started out his career pushing dirt there for the Clemens many, many years ago.
Right.
So, basically, we're not, we're not really touching the forested areas and the dark ground. It's just the light green, which has already been, you know, stripped of topsoil and it's just all there's ever grown back up there now.
Right. Yeah, there's a lot of wildlife traffic through that area, so it'll crunch that in a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have one more. I forgot. There's one more. How long do you plan on this project lasting from, so I know you said you were going to do it in phases.
That's correct.
What's your estimated time from breaking ground to every lot is completed and sold?
The first phase is the toughest always the way because we have to bring in, you know, town water and then create town sewer. So, that's, that's a lot of infrastructure though on the front, and that's, that's going to gain us this first loop of 10 homes. And from there, we had to build this boulevard, which is quite a, quite a feat. But once we get past the boulevard, we can do, there's like three phases beyond that and each phase could be like in a year. So, it might be, you know, five or six years over the course of, you know, 77 units.
Okay. Thank you.
And if the economy falls flat again, it'll be longer, you know, so.
Right, yeah, naturally. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no, no more quick questions. We conclude the meeting. I'd like to have the sign and chief back. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the questions.
You're going to need a-
No, this is the beginning of the conference. If you want.
No, I'll take it. See you in three weeks. Happy fourth.
All right.
Thank you.
What's up? All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Burwick Planning Board meeting. This is a regular meeting for Thursday, June 20th, 2019. If we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
James, just for your minutes, it's 6:54. The planning board members present tonight, regular member Sean Winston, the vice chair, Niles Shore, absent tonight is Paul Bover. Also present is Nicole Fecto, Mike LaRue, who is an alternate, who is not here, she decided to have a baby.
Yeah, he's a new dad and an alternate.
And just bringing him, bringing him home today, or her, home today. We do have a vacancy now that Noah Cobb is now a selectman, so if anybody wants to be on the planning board as an alternate member, we do have a-
Peg Wheeler.
We do have a vacancy.
More girls.
Also joining us tonight is the town planner. We also have the code enforcement officer and the town planning technician, Facebook administrator, and webmaster, James.
And concert director.
Concert promoter.
Promoter.
Promoter, right, yes.
While you're reading titles.
And various members of the public. Next on the agenda is the public comment session. It's open to any resident or property owner in the town of Burwick to come forward and talk about anything that relates to the planning board. So, feel free to come forward and just state your name and your address for the record and for our viewers at home, so public comment session's open.
The one other thing I'll-
State your name.
Peg Wheeler. Yes, Peg Wheeler. Sorry about that. The one other thing I'll add that I know didn't apply to that DEP permit is I remember last time there were some public safety concerns with the boulevard piece of that project about getting in and out of there. I don't know whether that changes anything, whether the Burwick PD and Fire Department have had conversations with anybody about the changes in the traffic on that road. I did today. I talked to the Burwick Police Department about my concerns about it, and I know Jerry Locke took a ride out there, so just adding that.
All right, thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Sean Goodwin, 65 Sullivan Street. I attended the selectmen's meeting on Tuesday evening. I attended the selectmen's meeting on Tuesday evening to clarify some things, get some answers and stuff for the record. First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Chair for the email that was sent regarding the board's concerns on the use of the parking lot, so thank you very much. I was told Tuesday that it wasn't shared with any other members of the board, which I think is not right. I think maybe.
What, what, my, my email wasn't shared with members of the select board or the planning board?
Yes.
All the select board?
Yes. And I think that's wrong, I think, I can't speak for you, but I'm assuming your intention was to make sure that the board as a whole was informed of you folks' opinion on, on what's going on there. That way they could make an informed decision or do their polls or whatever it is they're trying to do over there. I was told it wasn't shared because it was just a simple correspondence and it didn't come from the planning office, so I'd like to know if you could define what the planning office is.
Sitting behind you.
The, James and Lee J.
Yeah.
Well, they, they were CC'd on the email, the town manager
Yes, yeah.
And the, the chair of the select board were all on that email, and I got, I got one email back from the town manager.
Yeah. I think that's sad. With that said, the board was not polled if they were in agreement, as stated by the manager on the May 2nd meeting, and if it's okay with you, if I could share that correspondence with the rest of the board members?
Sure.
Yep, okay, thank you. I also asked him about the moving of the blocks over there. If you've been by there, you've seen that they put the blocks down through the center, forcing the cars closer to our home. And I asked, asked about why it was done, and it would, they said it was to limit the parking, however, we all know there's no enforcing of the parking over there. And the blocks were moved without any direction at all from the town manager or anybody else. He said it was done solely by the public works crew, which I find to be nonsense. Common sense suggests there had to be communication and some kind of direction given. I'm not gonna go over that whole meeting and all that stuff, I urge you folks to watch it. Most of you know the history of what's going on over there. I asked if the town had instructed the CEO if they, if to not enforce the 22-car limit, and they said no. And our lawyer has told us that this is a CEO enforcement issue. And I wish to quote Ms. Fecto from June 6 meeting, in which she said, "The planning board job is to uphold land use ordinances and comprehensive plan for everyone, including the town." And that is not being done. So that leaves you folks and the town planner to have Mr. Vincent do his job and stop this nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out here. Anybody else for public comment session? The only reply that I'll make to that last comment is, I continue to say that the town is in violation of the land use ordinance.
I agree.
And the town should cease using that parking lot.
I agree.
And how do we enforce that?
I will find out.
Is there not a provision in the land use ordinance that says if an applicant comes before us and is not in compliance, that their application must be denied or at least can't proceed?
I believe there is, I need to go looking for it.
Right, so when the time comes, should they come before us with an application? That will be when we can do our job.
Correct.
However we decide.
You as a board can do your job, yes.
Yes.
Listen, I, I don't wanna get to the point where we're gonna ask the code enforcement, or we're gonna ask Dan to go over there with the cease order, but if I remember correctly, three months ago, we had a concrete plant that was operating without an approved permit out on Route 4.
Correct.
And you went over there with a cease order.
Immediately, immediately.
And shut them down, because they weren't approved and they were actually doing that work. Now we have the town, I mean, what.
They're not being held to the same standards.
Have you been talked to about this?
I have.
By who?
By the town manager.
What did the town manager say?
Make sure you get this in the mic.
The, I should take a mic.
Dan Vincent, code enforcement officer for Berwick. I agree with you that there should be some resolve to the parking area. The other thing that is skipped when we discuss zoning ordinances is that the zoning is for the general welfare of the people of this community, and general welfare means the entire community. It's not selective to be at one residence or one parking lot or anywhere else in the town. What I've taken into consideration, and what I haven't moved forward with is because my thoughts are that this will be resolved somehow, but it seems like that's dragging along, but eventually it's going to be resolved. My concern when I go there to enforce a 22-car minimum, you gotta look at the people that are disabled, the elderly, now they're parking out on streets where probably the fire truck or the ambulance can't get by because it's parked on both sides, there's no sidewalks appropriate for children and people walking to the game, so there's other people that are in actual life safety situations that are gonna be in jeopardy until the town finally does a plan, but I'm not gonna put people's lives in jeopardy, that's also my job for the, for the welfare of the community.
What did you have the discussion with the town manager about?
About the whole situation, we've discussed all these, we discussed disabled, we discussed elderly, we discussed the fire access, emergency access, young children, sidewalks and street crossings.
We have lived without this parking lot for how many years?
Yeah.
Shut the parking lot down until they come with their conditional use permit. I don't understand what is so hard about that. Put the blocks across the front of it and shut it down, they don't have the conditional use, just like Northeast Redymix did not have a conditional use permit and you shut them down, until they went through the process, which lasted a long time and cost them a lot of money and a lot of heartache. The town is not above the citizens of the town, and I think it's ludicrous.
And we put people out, we put people out of work, because they had to stop.
Yeah, we put people out of work.
And people lost out on work, and I don't take any benefit out of, out of that parking lot, because my kids don't play T-ball or, or Little League anymore, you know, they're not.
The parking, we've never had the parking lot before.
No. Can James, James, can you speak to, where, where do we stand on the application? Where do we stand on the plan?
So the last time we were at the town was in front of you guys, the Todd Gannon from the engineer firm, we talked with him that night to get the proposal in the works. They've already been at the site measuring, so we expect to have the survey done, I think, this month, or, excuse me, July. And then at that point, as soon as the survey is done, we get the, we'll get the fence up, as soon as we know the property lines, and then the site plan can be done.
Do you know why all the parking was put right next to his property and, and his, him and his wife's property? Why was all that parking shifted over there?
There is a letterboard sign that says no parking along that line.
Yeah, well, that's doing a good job, that's doing a really, that's doing a great job, because people are parking right in front of it, it's ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous.
So I, I just think that the logic was just putting the, the blocks in the middle of the property to cut the area down.
Put the blocks along the fence line, too, so cars can't park there.
I, I agree with Nicole, because.
Whoa.
Mike. You know, I was, I was, my kids were involved in the baseball, I was down there for eight years, every spring, summer. The parking lot was never there, like Nicole said. Everybody found a place to park, it was fine, it was not a problem.
The gate was changed, you couldn't go through there if you wanted to.
No, you couldn't get through there. There's ADA parking down by the main gate to the rec field, there's, there's no reason to use that field. I don't believe that the number of kids playing ball has increased since my kids played. I think it's actually, might have gone down a little bit, or it stayed the same. So there's, there's no real need for that parking lot immediately and right now, so the whole thing should just be closed until this all gets resolved. It's crazy that we're still talking about this, and it's still causing a problem, it's still being used, just close the parking lot, eliminate the problem.
Yeah, and then.
And, you know, so sure, some people are gonna complain, but too bad, you didn't have this parking lot a year ago, so get over it and deal with it.
Yeah.
Get there early and park where everybody else parks, so you can get a spot. Don't show up five minutes before the game and expect to get a parking spot.
And the elderly.
Lee J., isn't there a provision in the land use ordinance that also says the applicant has to show that it has the technical ability to comply with the land use ordinance before we can approve something?
And, I mean, I've, I found the first statement that you were asking for, I, probably I'd have to go looking for the other statement, but I'm sure it's in there, most every land use ordinance or zoning ordinance.
So it, it would at least suggest to me that an applicant who is unable to comply with existing land use ordinance provisions would not have the technical ability to come with a new application before us. And perhaps those who are speaking on behalf of the town ought to remind the board of selectmen and the town manager that the land use ordinance has those two provisions, and that it's at least the intent of one of the members of this planning board to take that seriously.
Thank you. Well, as you can tell, that we're pretty heated about this, so if the, if.
I need some medical marijuana.
Anybody else for public comment session? Okay, moving on from public, I'll close the public comment session, moving on to the approval of minutes for the June 6, 2019 meeting. I do see one thing in here, James.
So you're taking Paul's position tonight?
I am taking Paul's position.
I see something that I'd like to see, too.
What?
Nicole's position.
Thank you. No?
Oh, and that's the one I messed up.
Well, under new business, under Blackberry Hill Road, it says a public hearing was set for 6:30 PM on June 20th. Can we just say that that, a public hearing's been, the applicant will be having an EPA application, public hearing.
DEP.
At a DEP, but we didn't set a public hearing for this. We didn't set a June 18th. I know we've been talking about that date, because that's our next meeting.
July.
July 18th, thank you. But we didn't set one, so can you just make that change?
Yep.
All right.
I would like the minutes to reflect on page two, under old business, the conditional use for David Springer, that you mentioned the purchase and sale agreement for the, I would just like a clarification, the purchase and sale agreement that is referenced here is for that cabin that is not on his property or on his property, whatever, but that no escrow was collected, there's no, I mean, the purchase and sale agreement is bullshit, because there's no escrow collected. Well, no, there's no, there's no escrow collected.
How about just BS maybe next time?
BS, whatever, sorry. It's Berwick.
Wow, you just pulled a, I won't say it.
Thank you.
Just gonna compare you, but.
Don't do that. But that, but that's all, I just want that.
I also messed up on a motion, so I'll mix that too.
Good job.
Make sure you don't put those comments in the minutes.
What were you doing for the first half hour?
Anybody else saw any changes to the minutes? Okay, if there are none, the motion would be for the approval of minutes as amended.
I motion to approve the minutes for the June 6 meeting as amended.
Second?
Further discussion, all in favor?
I wasn't here. Abstained.
All opposed, abstained, so that's three.
In favor.
Three in favor and one abstained, all right. Moving on to old business, subdivision amendment, Blackberry Hill Road map R-56, lot 3-2, applicant is Black Dog Realty.
I would suggest you put that on the table, since they have left and no one is here to discuss the application.
Yeah, I just, I put it on the agenda just in case there was anything to talk about, but.
Well, but can, we can still go ahead and set a public hearing even though they're not here, right?
That's a great question, um.
I don't think so.
I would suggest.
We don't, we haven't even voted an application complete.
Again, that's, that's, that, well, one, you have not found the application complete. And two, again, they're not here to discuss the application, so it really ought to automatically be put right on the table.
Why? Why? No, I mean, I'm not asking you why, I don't understand, why'd they leave?
I don't know, I think they thought they were done for the night.
Yeah, other people who were here to talk about it thought it was all done, too. I think that, you know, just got confused.
All right.
Because it was a separate.
Well, we don't have to table, we could just move, we don't, we could just.
Correct, you can just move, move ahead.
All right.
Come on.
Conditional use application, medical marijuana production facility, 398 School Street, R-3 zone with frontage on Route 9, applicant's David Sprigger, Springer, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Dustin. Do we have the ESOL for him?
Ah, we're good, I think you guys have seen that enough.
All right, thanks for coming.
It's the same plan.
I agree.
Dustin Morrow, Lion Pro Lancer Van.
Hold on a second, I'll turn it over to Lee J. first.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
So I, I did not provide you any revised memo. Again, you received, I think, a, a copy of a check that I think I saw two days ago. Again, I think that was part of our general discussion about getting information in a timely manner, so I haven't, I didn't have time, nor did I provide you anything regarding that, but you do have that in your packet for tonight. I did revise the findings of fact, based on the last meeting, more importantly, as part of that, the finding that I specifically addressed for you was the way we walked through the exterior lighting findings, on, there were three sections of that, it's on the bottom of page three, and goes to the top of page four, and of course, everything in red is the statements that I had heard you folks make as it related.
Of course, you understand.
We don't have red, so.
Oh.
Is that italics?
Must be.
Is the red italics?
Did you turn on a red copy paper?
No.
I've got color. So, so starting on the bottom of page three.
Is that, is the italics in red?
No, the italics is your, is the finding statement. The regular block print would be the finding statement that you folks would.
So what's in red?
The finding statement. Would you like my copy?
I guess we'd like you to read what's in red.
Actually, we could have made, we could have had fun with Niles and said, what do you mean it's not red? It's right here.
I've had that happen. This is what I turned into, so don't do it again.
It is fairly lengthy, but if you'd like me to read it, I think it, it regurgitates what you folks discuss section by section of the lighting piece.
And when you get to the red.
Yeah, of course, of course, of course. So, under exterior lighting, the finding statement starts, "With all exterior lighting shall be designed to minimize adverse impact on neighboring properties." In red, it says, "In making these finding, in making this finding, the board considers the following standards. The finding statement says, lighting may be used which serves security, safety and operational needs, but which does not directly or indirectly produce harmful effects on abutting properties or which should impair the vision of a, of a vehicle operator on adjacent roadways." In red, it says, "The planning board felt that security on this site is of concern and that the nearest property was located at least 150 feet from the lighting. Furthermore, during the onsite inspection, the abutter stated that the light was affecting the area of her kitchen, and the board indicated that people have shades in houses and that you do not sleep in the kitchen area, so they felt that this portion of the standard had been met." In italics, which is the next finding statement, "Lighting fixtures shall be shielded or hooded so that the lighting elements are not exposed to normal view by motorists, pedestrians or from adjacent dwellings." In red, the statement that was developed says, "During the discussion, one board member indicated that to check on this issue, he drove by the property after dark, it should say one evening, and he had to strain to look into the property where the lighting was located, so he did not feel that impact on vehicles was a concern. The abutter issues, the abutter issue was addressed above, and one other planning board member indicated that there are very few pedestrians along Route 9 in this location." The third piece of the finding states, "Direct or indirect illumination shall not exceed 0.5-foot candles upon abutting residential properties." In red, it states, "Most other communities establish zero light at the property line, and the board felt that 0.5 is generous, and that not all lighting spill over can be stopped." The applicant further indicated that from his perspective, and that, his perspective, and that all of the lighting, and that of the lighting consultant, Steve Moulton, and the state electrical inspector, Bill Perry, indicated that these lights met the dark sky standard and were shielded appropriately." End of the finding.
All right.
Thank you. Well done.
That was good.
Appreciate it.
So, moving on, in the conditions of, proposed conditions of the approval, I had put, we already had, "The applicant shall ensure that all lighting installed on the site, including but not limited to building and poles throughout the site, is dark sky compliant with cutoff fixtures to prevent light trespass on neighboring properties through the street." The other statement that was added is number four, which says, "The purchase of property noted in the purchase and sales agreement must be executed on or before July 31, 2019, and the executed deed be submitted to the planning department, or the shed be removed prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for building number five currently under review." And then the typical other standards for your conditions.
Any other recommendations or things that you see?
No, we've covered this one, beat this dead horse to death.
Dustin?
Yeah, I'm sorry about the check. I just saw we had to bring it here tonight, me and Mr. Springer both. He did, it was dated from his attorney at 5:24, so it wasn't lying last meeting that he had already given it to her. We just thought the purchase and sale agreement was good enough, because you do that for subdivisions and stuff till they get approved. You don't want to buy it if it gets shut down, but, so hopefully we get that covered. Yeah, I think we beat this one to death. Mr. Springer's tried anything you guys asked above and beyond, and just trying to cooperate as much as he can. I was hoping he was going to be here tonight, but he was busy down in Seabrook.
Are you happy he won't have to come back here for a while?
Hopefully, yeah, yeah. I might just come sit, because it's like a twice-a-month thing now.
Planning board opening, so...
I saw that.
It's fun, it's fun.
All right. Questions from the board? All right, so this was the only thing that we were waiting on, so, I mean, we could, tonight, we have three votes that we have to do here. Approval of the findings of fact, approval of the conditions of approval, and then approval of the application, so we have three votes this evening.
Well, I will move that we approve the findings of fact for applicant David Springer for 398 School Street.
Okay, we have a motion.
As amended or as written? Because you suggested some spelling errors you wanted to correct.
As long as you vote on it, I will clean it up and make sure it's back. That's an easy thing.
I will second the motion.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's four, nothing. Next on to the approval of the conditions of approval.
I move that we approve the conditions. Sorry, Sean. I'm remo...
Go ahead, keep going, keep going.
For the David Springer project at 398 School Street.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's four, zero. Okay, and then finally, approval of the application. Where is the application? It's in stuff, what do you mean, where is it? Like, you have it.
In my package.
It's not in your package, so, we already have it.
It's been floating around for a few months.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application for 398 Portland Street.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Great, thanks.
Have a nice summer.
Yeah, hopefully. See you in Fall. Good luck.
Next on the agenda, conditional use application, 115 School Street, map U-3, Lot 42. This is in the R-1 zone with frontage on Route 9. The applicant is William Dane, and I will turn it over to the town planner.
Great, thank you. William Dane is proposing to demolish the existing building for the use, for the use from, and from the use, from construction, construct a new building with two auto repair and detailing bays. As part of the review of this project, the applicant is utilizing a portion of the ordinance in Article 6.6.3, under Note Number 1, which allows for reduced side yard setbacks. The abutters setback are 5.82 on the west side and 12.84 on the east side, allowing this property to have a 9.33 side yard setback. I would be happy to go through the rest of that for you, but I think more importantly, what I'd like to suggest is that under the revised report for you, the big question that came up on the plan was a number of the front parking spaces are in the DOT right-of-way. And I had a long conversation with Ryan about that so that we could try to come to some conclusion on it, and you will see Title 29, Chapter 29A, Chapter 19, Rules of the Road, subsection 2068, for parking. Ryan provided that to me after some of his own research, and basically it outlines how parking can and cannot be done in the DOT's public right-of-way. This parking that is on that site is not applicable to being affected by DOT parking requirements. The applicant is proposing to tie into the public water supply, which has a main on the other side of Route 9. This means that the applicant will need a DOT permit to trench across Route 9 for the eventual tying to the water, and it has been determined that the town does not have an urban compact designation, which in turn will require DOT approvals. The road was paved six years ago, so they're outside the moratorium and can cut into the road to tie into the water when they choose to do so. If you're not aware, when the DOT repaves a road, there's a five-year moratorium from cutting into it, and the only time you can usually cut is if it's an emergency situation, but we're beyond the five years in that section of road. The last issue is that the applicant is proposing a new fence line to be extended on the property of Anna M. Brown to the east side of the site. He will need to obtain approval from Ms. Brown in order to put the fence on the property or add an extended fence on his property. We discussed that during the site walk at 5:30, and we should be obtaining a letter or a statement from Ms. Brown indicating that she has no problem with the fence being placed on her property. The revised plan also shows the proposed building as the board requested at the last meeting, so you do have a building plan in front of you. The building is a traditional 12-by-8 peak roof with clapboard or vinyl siding to match a New England-style structure to the best that they can, and at this time, I have no other concerns or issues on the application.
Turn it over to you.
Good evening. My name's Ryan McCarthy. I'm with Tidewater Engineering and Surveying. Leejay covered most of it, but to go over some of the changes we made to the plan, since the last one that you saw, was we added the building-mounted lights to the building. We had the location of the existing sign, the proposed fencing, so there is an existing fence on this side of the property that we're proposing to extend back to the back, pretty much the tree line. That fence is on the abutter's property. Once the boundary survey was done, we noticed that, you know, the boundary line was actually, the fence was actually over the property line, so what we're going to do is we're going to propose to the abutter that we simply extend the fence. The fence was replaced by Bill Dane when he bought the property, so it's a really nice white new vinyl fence. We're going to try to get a statement from her. If she's willing to allow us to extend the fence, we'll get a notarized statement from her to provide to you as the board. In the event she doesn't want the fence there, or the fence to be extended, we can adjust and we can shift it over to our property. On the other side of the property, to the left side of the plan as you're looking at it, we are proposing the same type of fence. It's a solid panel, white vinyl, and that will be extended to just about the back of the building. We've also labeled the general parking area for vehicle sales in the front and a general area for vehicle repairs in the back. You've asked for an LID statement. The proposed development incorporates a few different LID measures, the first being the majority of the site is already developed at 72%, with the proposed scenario, we're reducing that just a little bit. You get a little bit of a benefit there. During the site walk, we talked about the, there's a grass strip between the sidewalk and the parking area for vehicles for sale. The soil composition in that strip is pretty poor. It's mostly sand and gravel and weeds, so what the applicant would like to do is scrape out the top surface of the material, bring in some nice loam, and establish, establish grass during that, in that strip. So the runoff that's coming off the front half of the parking will actually go through that grass strip, which will filter out a lot of the particles and promote some infiltration, too. In the back half of the property, the back half sheets back to the woods behind it and comes off a pretty steep embankment, so what we thought we could do is we would create a shallow vegetated swale, just a shallow depression, to collect any of the runoff, so it doesn't just go sheeting right off of that embankment. Any debris or sediments that's in this, in the runoff coming out the pavement will also be trapped in that, in that shallow depression. So those are the LID, the LID measures that we're proposing for this project. The building elevation views have been provided to you. We took a look at all the existing buildings along that stretch of road. Majority of them are just simple ranch houses, so we mimic the same style for the proposed So this is the, this is the elevation view of the buildings. We've got two garage bays.
Just out of curiosity, what color is it going to be?
Couldn't tell you that. I think we were talking about a gray, beige, a neutral color.
Yeah. Not like purple or pink, nothing crazy like that.
I'm green, no. It'll be a neutral color. Off to the left-hand side is the entrance to the office, and the front facade actually allowed us to have a nice area to put the business sign right above that door.
Looks good. Just one minor thing. I brought it up last time, and I know that the tax maps, the tax cards have changed, but that lot just to the north, that's the town of Burwick owns that land. Heritage Estates doesn't, or Heritage Woods doesn't exist anymore, because that was my old subdivision, so it's town of Burwick. So James, if you're trying to notice Heritage Woods, you won't find them.
Well, I wanted to make sure you didn't think I ignored that.
No, 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 I don't, I don't, I'm just...
We did take a look, and we found the deeds that conveyed out the open spaces for that subdivision, and if you look at the legal descriptions within that deed, there's three different open spaces for that subdivision. It only conveyed the two that are titled covenant areas, and the open space that's behind this one wasn't actually conveyed to the town.
Oh.
There may be another deed out there that does that separately, but I couldn't find it.
Oh, I'll have to go back and look at that.
Wow, Mr. President.
No, I'm the treasurer of my homeowners association, so it's not my fault. All right, thanks for bringing that up.
There may be another deed that we just didn't see.
Any questions from the board?
I got all kinds of questions over here. So the plan is going to, says that the water and sewer will be tied into the public systems, but right now, is there water and sewer at the property at all? Okay, so you'd have to, you have to tie in, in order to do this. And then, under our findings of fact, under number six...
Since you haven't actioned on this, these are...
I know, I know, but I just, I just want to...
Yeah.
...talk about it, since I have it circled. It just says, we have it saying that the applicant has proposed a drainage pond to the rear of the site, and I don't think that that's an accurate description.
Drainage swale?
Yeah, it's, because...
Drainage depression.
They called it a depression. I've heard depression a few times, which is different than a pond, so...
Sure. There's actually a pond back there. Did you know that?
Well, you still own it, so go enjoy it.
It's a skating pond back there.
Perfect, well, maybe we'll, the town of Burwick, from what I understand on Facebook, the people really want more places to skate, so...
Ferguson Brook.
You know, if you had the colored copy like I do, you'd see that I had it marked in red, because I questioned it.
Well, good job.
Patty and I are working on this. You guys are going to get tablets, and you'll get your packets and your tablets, and they'll be in color.
I like paper.
I would rather just, I'd rather have a comp plan than having tablets.
Seriously, I'd rather have a comp plan than tablets, too.
Our comp plan was funded, we're starting that soon.
How about sidewalks instead of tablets? How many feet of sidewalk can you get for a tablet? I'm just kidding. Now, we're getting off course here, I'm sorry.
Kidding.
I'm sorry.
What's that?
So last time at our meeting, we, we did vote this application complete.
We did, with the LID...
Correct.
Which they...
And I do like that. That makes a lot of sense, what you're talking about there with the grassed area there and the runoff going into the street and all that, so, so the next thing would be, I mean, we would want to have a public hearing on this. So, we would want to set a public hearing. Would it be too much, you think? Well, no, because we're not doing a public hearing on the 18th. This will be the only one.
Correct.
Just want to make sure, that is the date, right? Because we're not meeting on the 4th, because Niles wants to celebrate 4th of July instead of having a planning board meeting.
This is America, for goodness sake. Come on.
Raise the flag.
I've got to be the one to remind us about America? Come on now.
So the 18th, at 6:30 for a public hearing, does that work for you? James, it work for you?
Leejay?
Yeah. Leejay, Dan?
Yep.
Everybody else?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a public, another public comment session. It's open to any resident property owner to come up and talk about anything relating to the planning board, so public comment session's open once again.
We're running out of public.
There's no public.
We're running out of the public. That's my sister-in-law, so, she's from Florida.
You can't come up here and talk, so...
Sister-in-law, I was going to say.
It must be nice to be...
It's a lot cooler here than in Florida, right?
Yeah.
We'll see nobody come forward, close the public comment session. Any items that the board would like to share with the public or other members of the board?
I would like to request that we get something in writing from the town attorney relative to the BlackBerry Hill subdivision.
Oh, sure. I didn't, I didn't make that statement today, but I did speak with him this afternoon.
Yes, I know you...
Yep, and I will ask him to follow up with a written statement on that.
Presumably, it will come up at some point in futuro, as they say.
I could share the emails, or I'll have James share the emails with you guys. That way, I'm not, that way, I'm not sharing stuff over email with everybody, but...
I think we saw the email, or are there more emails than what we saw?
No, 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 this is the email that I sent to Leejay, asking him to talk to the town attorney about...
Oh, okay.
...the application and the response, and he was ready tonight to...
Okay.
We planned it all out.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so...
Well done.
Anybody else? All right, next on the agenda is the adjournment.
I move that we adjourn the June 20 planning board meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Finished, Doc.